The first thing under information that I want to announce tonight is the retirement of Bobby Irvin, who's been at the water treatment plant for a tremendous amount of time. He's a 50-year employee of the town of Clifton Forge. He announced his retirement to us last month. Last day of employment will be January 31st of this year. He's been a true asset to the town and an invaluable employee. Developed and ran that water plant without a glitch for all those years and he'll provide the best water in the state for us. So, in light of his retirement, there will be some promotions coming forward also effective February 1st of this year at the water treatment plant. And Mr. Irvin had kind of groomed his replacements as he wanted them to come along. And it is my privilege and pleasure tonight to announce the promotion of Tony Kimberlin to be the director of the water treatment plant. Tony's been with the town a number of years and is the senior person in seniority at the treatment plant under Mr. Irvin. And then as Tony's second there, Mr. E.R. Gilbert will move into the lead operator's position, which is being vacated by Tony's promotion. I've talked with both of these gentlemen. Both of these gentlemen are tremendously dedicated employees to the water plant. Mr. Irvin said that he was very comfortable leaving the plant in their hands. And in light of their promotions, that leaves an opening at the entry level for an entry level operator. And the ads have started appearing in the paper for that. And they will be conducting their interviews probably within the next week or so to bring somebody on at an entry level and move them in to a position on a night shift spot to fill the gaps made there. Very, very privileged to be able to make these promotions tonight and very honored to be able to say thank you to Mr. Irvin for all of his years of truly dedicated service to the town. So having said that, that's the news at the water treatment plant. Two other things under information. Update on the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission. If you'll remember, last month, there was an action item to appoint a second representative from Clifton Forge to that commission. And almost, it was tabled for discussion after a closed session to be dealt with this month and voted on. Almost immediately after that conversation, I got an email from the commission and they are looking to reduce the size of the commission. And the only way to effectively do that is to reduce the number of representatives from each locality. So, the proposal at this time is that they would reduce Clifton Forge's representation on the commission by 50%. And instead of having one elected official and one citizen representative elected, they would like to reduce that to the one elected official, which in the case of Clifton Forge, that elected official is Mayor Marshall. She's very well established in that role, very well welcomed from the commission in that role. And, you know, I think that is a good set all the way around. They did make it clear that I, as the town manager, with your permission, would be able to sit in and listen on those meetings just to kind of stay abreast of everything so that you and I can bring those back to council and inform them of what's going on. So, that's the reason, that's the reason for the update. There's really no action that needs to be taken tonight because we already have the one representative elected and they're going to reduce that by half. So, we're covered there. Pam, is anything you'd like to, Mayor Marshall, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I'll stay on there. You can sit in or maybe you can go and I can't go. That all works. As long as we bring the information back, that's all I'm concerned about. So, yeah, that works. Thank you.
Any questions from anybody on that? The next item under information is, this is an ongoing dilemma for everybody in the area and it's the recycling situation. I probably get three to four calls a week concerning the recycling. Councilman Umstead and I have had several conversations about the recycling bins up behind Matthews Park. Almost immediately after Christmas, once they arrived back with the empty trailer, within three days, it was full. Boxes and things get put on the outside. Councilman Umstead actually came up with a good idea and a good thought on this. And I ran this by Billy Basham, the general manager of RDS in Virginia, who is handling our recycling. And the proposal was that we add a second trailer up there, but we keep that trailer secured so nobody can put things in it until the first trailer is full. First trailer gets full, we call them, they come and pick up the first trailer and in the meantime, we open the second trailer. When they bring the new trailer, we secure it till that other trailer is full. There is an incurred expense with this though. And the incurred expense is $75 rental on the additional container. Right now, we're renting two a month, which is $150 per month. Then each time those containers are pulled and emptied, it's $545. So, quite honestly, when you, if you do this, you're running the potential of, and we're contracted for two pulls and empties a month now, for a total of right out $1,100. It's $1,090, Leanna, something like that. So, you run the potential, if you do this, of tacking on an additional $545 per month. They're upping that to $1,600 a month for recycling plus the extra $75 for the rental on the container. I'm presenting this information as it was presented to me. I'm not sure, and Leanna, this is a question for you. I'm not sure that there's money in the budget that can cover that additional expense.
We do not have, to go to many more pulls a month, even one more pull a month is going to be substantial on the budget.
You're $6,000, $6,000 to $7,000 a year is what you're looking at, to add one trailer and one pull a month.
Are they pulling that every, once every two weeks?
Put it on the 16th and the 30th. That's how it's set up now. I realize that recycling is a great thing, but at the same time, you have to realize that we have to work within the constraints of our budget and the money that we have available to work with. This is a decision that really, I think, needs to be approved or decided by council. And quite frankly, might not be a decision that y'all can make tonight.
So, can I say something?
Yes.
Okay. If we, if they, if we have two trailers down here, they pull one on the 15th and the 30th, and they keep leaving a trailer there, I think over a month's time, they could only pull the two trailers, at least probably, it'll be close, we'd be all right. Because there's none of the trailers with things in. Like you said, the one that filled up after Christmas was because of all the Christmas stuff that people had.
Right.
And I would think they're just going to continue to fill that fast.
And I believe Mr. Basham said we could do this on a trial basis.
Yes, Mr. Basham said he would not hold us to any agreement on this. We could try this on a trial basis. And the way that he would want to set it up is it would be us calling them when the trailer needed to be emptied. So that would necessitate us checking the trailer, which is no problem, we can do that, and making a phone call. And then within a day, he'll have a new trailer here and we can go ahead and open the second trailer that's sitting there.
Yeah. I think that would be, I think it would be all right in the long run.
I'd like to hear some complimenting Dolan's on that because he gave such a stern overview on recycling that I've started to recycle. So Ron, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, a few rements. Remember we were back when we were discussing, Dr. Remember Enterprise still doing different stuff. I did have extremely negative feeling of recycling value that it actually is and worth it. And I certainly am not in favor of spending anywhere near the amount of money that Chuck just talked about.
Is the problem, Bob and Chuck, of overflowing? And I mean, is that, that's what we're looking at? Instead of, I know there's some money over us in recycling.
I think the problem is this, Jeff. The trailer gets full and people don't go down there because they don't put anything in.
Yeah.
On the 15th, they pull that trailer. On 16th or 18th, the next trailer's full.
Yeah. For to cure that problem, could we, this is just throwing this out. Instead of buying another, having another pull for $500, just put a dumpster there to, to overdo the, to keep it off the ground and throw it through the neighborhood?
What's that dumpster over there by the Shell Station? That's always running over.
Yeah.
And then there's a dumpster over there by, by the recycling bin. And that's full of trash too.
But that recycling?
I think those are private dumpsters contracted by private, right. And the town is not involved in those in any way. So, the two items up there that the town is responsible for are the recycling trailers that they back in there at the end of the park.
Okay.
Okay? The potential?
This is Dr. Dolan. If you, if you are talking about getting a dumpster, then you're saying that we're not going to recycle, just from a throwing the landfill that permanently?
Which they already were doing in the first place, I mean.
I don't think, and this is just from what I'm hearing from residents that call, I don't think it's going to be well received by the folks that recycle for you to set a dumpster there to suggest that they just throw their recycling away. My suggestion would be one of two. Accept it like it is now and continue to do the best we can with it and work within the money that's been budgeted for it. Or give the, the third trailer a try on a trial basis. See how that runs over the next couple of months. See how it impacts the budget and revisit it in, say, 60 days and see where we are. Leanna, would you be comfortable with that decision as from a financial standpoint?
What happens now when, when it overflows and everything's flowing around?
They throw it from the side all around with bottles.
And then it goes to, it goes to the dumpster, cleaned up, it goes to the trash. I mean, the whole course. I know people that recycle would like it, but I mean, we're in a tight spot here on our budget. It's going to get tighter.
I like that we have the two months that we can do a trial. And then the interim, could we talk to the city of Covington because they're looking at these?
They're going to be saying that.
The recycle issue.
Yeah, they're going to be about the same boat we are. But yeah, we can do that.
Yeah. So, can we agree on that? Should we table it or do we need to take a vote on that?
I think that's just discussion for the town manager, sort of direction for.
Okay.
To get your input on, so is that what you'd like to see us do, is to have them start bringing the extra trailer on a trial basis and see how it goes and revisit this in about 60 days?
What are your thoughts on that, Dr. Dolan?
Well, one thing I was just thinking there, you know, if we go to the public and say, it costs us this X amount of money to recycle, does the public think it's worth it? And, you know, almost would want to have a fee for people who want to recycle, that they pay for the recycling. Or you're talking about raising taxes. Either way, you're talking about charging for the recycling because the town can't afford to keep doing it, you know, essentially for nothing. And, you know, if you look at the economics of recycling, it certainly is not a very, you know, my mind, it's a nice thought, but the economy is not, not supportive of recycling. We have too much, you know, if you ever looked at what's in those recycling things, there's a lot of plastic bags that people put the recycling in plastic bag and then they throw all plastic bag in there, which you're not supposed to do. There's a lot of stuff in there that I wouldn't think is really recyclable. They're just putting stuff in there that, you know, they don't want anymore and some they could recycle it and that's fine. And they've done, you know, let somebody else decide if they want to recycle it. But, you know, I, I like the idea of recycling, but I think the ultimate solution in the United States is to reduce and stop making so much plastic, stop using so much plastic. You know, you go into the grocery store and you see baskets, food baskets, grocery carts that people are pushing and it's just full of plastic drinks and plastic water bottles and all sorts of things that, you know, we, people, you know, just need to stop doing so much.
Well, Ron, in your scenario, if we have some people pay for it and some people not, then everybody's going to be recycling that wants to recycle whether they pay for it or not. In your first scenario.
And let me, if I may, just to say this. I don't think that tonight is going to be the ultimate decision maker on how the town proceeds forward. Honestly, I think that that is a discussion item down the road a few months when we start working on the budget for fiscal year '21, '22. And at that time, I think, Leanna, if I'm correct, that would be the time to revisit how much, if anything, the town wants to budget for recycling. The issue we have right now is, a concern was voiced by a council member and several citizens. And a request was made to, for me to present to council, an alternative to try to alleviate the overflow of the recycling bins at, at the, as the current situation. So, I think really the discussion tonight is, do we want to continue in the manner that we are and work within the confines of the budgeted money? Or do we want to try to accommodate these folks and try, on a trial basis, the third trailer and see how that does really impact us financially in a real life situation?
Could you call JRE and ask to bring a trailer and we'll work with them too?
We are under contract to RDS.
We can't look at nobody else there.
We are under contract to RDS.
Okay, so can we put this like an unofficial poll on the webpage, the town webpage, to ask for input from the public on that?
I actually think we're making this a lot more complicated than it needs to be.
Okay.
To be honest with you. I think, I think the question at hand tonight is, and yes, in the long run, we can do that.
And talk to Congress.
The question at hand tonight is, do you want to continue with the bins as they are and, and work with the money that's been budgeted? Or do you want to have a trial basis with the third one? And in the meantime, while we're doing the trial basis on the two months with those, we can put a poll out there and try to get input from citizens.
Yeah.
And from where I am, it, you know, it, it doesn't matter, from my point of view, you know, because I see both sides of the, of the situation. But I also am realistic enough to know that it is our responsibility to work within the confines of the money we have available.
How long did you say there was trial base?
I would say no more than 60 days.
Two months. And then that would give us time to get feedback from the citizens and talk to Congress.
And Dr. Dolan, and how much do you think it's the next two months of a trial basis of the next trailer, what's that going to cost us?
Well, if we, if we actually wind up pulling the extra trailer each month, it would be an additional $1,100 for the pull, pulls, and an additional $150 above that for the rental on the containers. So you're looking at $1,300.
And we have that?
I know, over 60 days.
And if the, our budget is for two quarters, that that costs us how much?
I couldn't hear him.
What's the question, what's it costing us now?
What's it costing?
Well, the two, the two pulls are $1,090 and $150 for the rental on the trailers.
What do you have to pay?
Monthly, monthly.
Monthly.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Councilman Wolf?
I think it's an awful lot. If it runs over, you try it 68, you don't have to pull down the trailer. I think it would be fine, but once you pull it.
Yeah, once you pull it, that's what it is.
I mean, you go on, you go on trial for 60 days, you'll be losing, what, $1,100 plus $150 or $1,400. If you lose $1,400, you just stop it. You know, if you don't pull it, if you don't pull it, then you.
If you don't pull it, then you'll know that it worked.
You know it's working.
But then if you do pull it, I'll be setting ourselves up for expectations. What do you think, Bob? What are your thoughts, you and Jeff, and then we can move on.
Mayor, Chuck, before we get tried for 60 days?
Mr. Umstead?
Yeah, glad to be here, yes.
You want to try it on the trial basis or, what's your thought on that?
Well, my thought's real simple. I believe that pulling an extra trailer and pulling on the 15th and the 30th, it's going to cost us an extra $75 a month. And I believe that's how it's going to work because I don't believe they're going to keep building them up. But the other thing here is we could just take them all out of there and then we could deal with everybody that wants us to recycle.
We can't take them out, we under contract.
Yeah, we're under contract.
For how long?
A year, right?
A year.
A year. We just stopped, did this contract, didn't we?
Did it last year.
All right, so I guess we'll just move on to the manager's comments.
Let's try it. What I'll suggest to council, let's try.
I think we all said we'll do the trial, but then we want to revisit for that money.
Okay, thank you.
Is that agreeable to all council?
Yes.
Councilman Dolan?
Yes, we'll try. I'd like to see, reflect, reflect on it some and then look at the numbers again and what's it costing us, the way we're doing it at the present moment and what's going to cost us, you know, at the end of the two months. And I would really look at that with a critical eye.
Okay, councilperson Umstead, you in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we can move on to manager's comments now.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. First thing I want to do tonight is I want to introduce to you our new administrative assistant and deputy clerk to council, Ms. Kewana Persinger. This is her first night with us here at a meeting. She's been on board with us since the first, since the 4th of January. We're really glad to have her. It's a big help to finally have a full staff downstairs and just want to welcome her. And Kewana, thank you for accepting the position and being here.
Thank you, sir.
Secondly, tonight, I want to extend my congratulations to Mayor Pam Marshall on her election as the mayor of the town of Clifton Forge. I consider it a privilege to work with you and look forward to working with you in the future to keep things moving in a positive manner. And Vice Mayor Irvin, extend my congratulations to you and look forward to continually, to continue to work with you in the manner that we have. And also welcome new councilperson Carl Shorty is how I know you, Wolf, and look really forward to working with you and seeing how the next little bit unfolds. And welcome to you for being here. I just got a couple of things I'd like to bring to everybody's attention tonight. One of the big things that I was, or one of the things that I was talking about is the CARES Act money. But I think we've already discussed that and exhausted that, so I don't need to revisit that. I will say this about the CARES Act money though, we have pretty much used what's been allocated to us on this round of, of wave of funds. If there's any other, other funds left in this wave, it's kind of earmarked for a future project. And we don't know at this time if there's going to be a third wave of funding or not. We'll, we'll have to wait a little while to see about that, but we will keep you informed on that. Second thing is the Smith Creek Pedestrian Bridge that we talked about being installed last month on the Smith Creek Trail down here. If you'll remember, it's a bridge that was replaced under a VDOT grant, 8020, VDOT grant to replace the non-compliant bridge over Smith Creek. That installation is final. They had the final walkthrough today. Everything's been approved and inspected. And I think I heard him say that there were a few punch list items left to just clean up a little bit, but most of that's going to be taken care of by our Public Works Department. So, I encourage anyone who's able or wants to to go down and take a walk and enjoy the scenery trail that's down there. A lot of work's been put into that. I guess last week, Jeff and I had an opportunity to show the old high school building to a potential investor. She's a real estate agent from Buena Vista. She and her husband came over and toured the facility. I will say this, I was amazed at how good a condition the building is inside, given the amount of vandalism and things that it has sustained through the years. But overall, it's a sound structure. They are extremely interested in the facility. They like the sheer size of it. They like the fact that it has an auditorium in it that they could use for theatrical productions. And I asked them how they found out about the high school. And they had done a production at the Masonic Theater. And they found out about the high school and went up and looked at it and had been wanting to tour it for some time. They have a lot of plans and a lot of ideas for the use of all the space. And the way it's been left is they have come back and gotten copies of the blueprints of the building for the floor plans. And they're in the process of building a prospectus to bring to us to present to council with a plan for their development of that facility and some financial records and things of that nature so we can, can look at where they are standing, where they go with that. But this is not going to be something that's going to happen overnight. It will be a working in progress. But Jeff, you were, you were there. They are extremely excited about the facility. And they didn't consider it a daunting task. and they didn't consider it a daunting task at all to take it on. That might, that might be something that we have to look forward to. And then the last thing tonight is the COVID update. You know, the health department is still in phase one and there's three steps to phase one, one A, one B, one C. And up until today, it had been predominantly for police, fire, EMS and teachers K through 12 in the locality. Today though, we got the announcement from Ryan Mootersfall that the health district has now entered into second phase of phase one and vaccinations will include officials needed to maintain continuity of government. And basically what that means is all of your, your town staff, town hall staff and all council members and elected officials of the town are eligible to receive the vaccine. What will have to happen is the department heads will have to get me a list of their employees that are interested in receiving the vaccine. I have to have that information to Ryan by Friday. So if there's any council members that are interested in obtaining the vaccine, please let me know. I need your full name and your email address so they, they can contact you for an appointment and I would like to get that, I have to have that submitted to him by Friday, the 15th and the vaccination should start next week.
We need name, full name.
Name, full name and email address. And Ms. Mayor, that's all I have for my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.